So first of all, first of all, I want to thank everyone for joining us for this first installment of the open mic debate series right here for the August 4th primary election. This particular installment is focused on the District 4 County Council position. And we have two candidates that are here to talk about their platform, their goals for for North County and the 4th District and the county as a whole. And they want to make sure that you know, and you are knowledgeable about what is about what is kind of going forward and what their plans are going forward for the 4th District. So I want to thank both of our candidates, Shalonda Webb and Mark Bellman for joining us and for being a part of this this initiative and for really wanting to make sure that all constituents know what's going on with their candidates. So we're going first just get started asking some some questions so that everyone that's watching knows you are able to ask questions in the comments, in the comment section of the of the live. And we will make sure we get those questions that you have answered. We want to make sure that that the the goal and feeling of open mic is respected completely here. And that is the reason that we keep those lines open. So I'll be asking some questions, but then also you are to help populate the questions that are asked of our candidates. So as we go ahead and get and get started, let's let's flip a coin, see who who goes first.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Ladies, ladies can always go first.
Oh, such a gentleman.
Look at them. All right. Okay, Mark. Okay, Mark.
That was the way I was raised.
I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm glad. So we'll so we'll start with we'll start with Shalonda. And Shalonda, and and like I said, we'll be asking you both the same questions. But Shalonda, who are you? And why are you the right person for this job as county council District 4 representative? And why are you the right person at this time for this job?
First, thank you Ted for this opportunity for sharing your platform with me and us so that we can share with the community and they can be informed of what we will bring to the table as your next county council, what I will bring to the table as your next county councilwoman. So your question is, who am I? So I am a Southern girl by heart. I was born and raised in Port Arthur, Texas. I went to Fisk University in Nashville, Tennessee, and that is how I became a resident of North County. I accepted a job at this university from the Boeing Company as a software engineer 22 years ago. And I started my journey and made North County my home 22 years ago. I am a wife, a mother of three wonderful young men. I can't call them boys anymore because they're all college and high school now. I again, an engineer and manager and leader at the Boeing Company. And I am a concerned citizen of this community. Unlike my opponents, I am not a lifelong politician. This is not my livelihood. This is my passion. I'm in this race because I am concerned about the state and the future of North County. North County need leadership that would be intentional and proactive about its future. So why it's me now, just because of the reasons I stated to you. We need a game plan. We need someone that has our voice in heart at all times, not when it's convenient. No, I don't have a lot of titles, but what I do have, a lot of passion for North County, concern about North County, and I'm vested in North County because I live here.
Right. Thank you so much. Mark, same question. Why are you, who are you, and why are you the right person for this position, this job right now?
Well, again, I would like to also thank you Ted for for hosting this. And for all of the folks who are tuned in listening, this is a great opportunity for Shalonda and myself. I have been a community leader for 33 years. I was born and raised in this community and I'm 62 years old. I had been on the Hazelwood Board of Education for 22 years as an elected volunteer. I am also the president of our local food pantry called Team T E A M. Been involved with them for quite a few years. I'm a treasurer of the Rotary Club and the Florence Rotary Club has a model motto of service before self. I'm the past president and current director of the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce. I am a general contractor builder in my career, of which I was in business for 23 years. I am retired as of 2011. My wife, who had a real estate brokerage, Century 21 Bellman, she retired and became my office manager and unfortunately in 2009, she came down with cancer and she passed away January 2010. Business and running a business was no longer any any fun. I'm also co-chairman, past chairman of the North Star District Boy Scouts. I'm also past president of the F O P for the Palatine Renewal Center up on Old Halls Ferry. I am I am a person of high ethics and moral standards. And and that is very important in leadership these days. I clearly communicate with mutual expectations and understanding, but also allow for flexibility of others' opinions. Again, I have been a very big voice in North County and I've taken on strong issues that have affected North County. Anywhere from subsidized housing as far back as 1995, subsidized housing apartments in the city of Hazelwood just two years ago. I'm very proud of the fact that no new construction subsidized apartment projects have been built in North County since 1995. I also sat on a St. Louis County Ad Hoc Committee in 1996 that studied subsidized housing. So I've I've been around and I've been very vocal in our community for the values of our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So it looks like we have definitely two different different positions here. We have a person who has not been in politics and someone who has been for a long time working within the political system or like community leadership positions. Right? And 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 really is up to our is up to our constituents to to determine which of these are the best route forward? And which of these ideals are going to take us to the the next best step? I think both of I think both are important. And so I'm excited to continue this conversation. So North County and 4th District specifically is a pretty large area. It's generally a pretty large area. So I want to kind of understand, I want our people to understand of you a little bit, a little bit more. What neighborhood do you live in? Why did you choose to live there? And what are your favorite places to to spend time in District 4? What do you like, you know, having a good time or enjoying yourself in District 4? We'll go with Mark since Shalonda started the last question.
Sounds good. I was married in 1975 at the age of 17.
Man.
I had my daughter at the age of 17. Very proud of that. But my wife and I first lived in a subdivision called Castle Point. We lived there for three years. It was a changing community at that time. But after that, as a carpenter, that's my trade, I built our first house in Park Oregon Forest and lived there, lived in Park Oregon in the first house for six years. I then built a second house in Park Oregon Forest, third edition in 1984. And then in 2006, my wife and I moved into one of our rental properties here in the township of Florence proper. 63034 zip code, of course, has a Florence mailing address, but that is not a municipality of Florence proper. We moved into Florence for the simple reason of running for Florence politics. And and that was the whole, that was the whole intent. We kept our house in Park Oregon. I sold it in 2011, a year after my wife passed away. What do I frequently do? What do I like in North County? Columbia Bottoms Conservation Area. I was very involved when when they were looking at taking that area over. Very supportive from a community standpoint. I like going to Spanish Lake. I take my granddaughters there. We like to fish. That's the only bonding time grandpa has with his two girls and they like to fish. They don't like touching worms and they don't like taking fish off the hook. But
Yeah, who does?
Those are my, those are my activities as far as North County.
All right. All right. Well, same same. Thank you so much for that, Mark. And same question, Shalonda.
So my story is quite different than Mark's. I think what we have in common is in 1975. So I was born in 1975. So that's dear to me. But my story is quite different to North County. So as I mentioned earlier, I accepted a job at Boeing from the Boeing Company back in 1998. And I was staying at Old Henry VIII Hotel on Limburg while they while we were trying to find housing myself, my husband and our newborn son at the time, he was two months old. And we went to the snooks that was on Limburg. And we were, we probably looked as green as you could possibly believe be. And there was a elderly black lady who came up to us and she said, sweetheart, y'all know to this area. You just look like you're not from here. And I said, yes, ma'am. We just, we've just been here maybe two weeks. And she said, well, where do you live? And I said, well, I live in, we're staying right now in Old Henry VIII. But recruiters had said the best place to live in St. Louis was in St. Charles County and in St. Peters. And I said, well, I'm trying to wait on housing to become available, an apartment to become available there. She said, would you mind allowing me to take you to this area? I think you and your new family would love this area. And I said, yes, ma'am. So she met us on a Sunday morning and we followed her out. And we drove into North County and she brought us to the home, not the home now, but to the area where I live now. She brought us to Barrington Down and she drove us all through this area. And I instantly fell in love and I was like, I was telling my husband, we have to live here. We have to raise our kids here. And so 20 years ago, 21 years ago, because we had to wait for the home and everything to come available. But that's when I fell in love with North County. I love, I live in the same home now, 21, 22 years ago, that I moved into when we first moved to St. Louis. I have raised all of my kids here and I love North County. Now, what do we do and what do we have in enjoying North County? I do like the parks out here. I enjoy my family activities and going to church. But as a young family raising kids and my kids are developed, I honestly thought about that question, Ted. And when I thought about what we love to do in North County, it was very limited, very slim, because I have young children. So I was spending my money in Incredible Pizza out there in South County. I was spending my money at Bounce U or Fly Spider or all of those activities to keep our youth engaged and active and vibrant, I didn't have in North County. I had to go outside of North County to find those solutions for my children. And that is a problem that I see with North County that I would like to address as the new county county councilwoman.
All right. Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I think you both have pretty rich stories for for why you live in North County, why you live in in the 4th District specifically. And so I I'm hopeful that that are that your constituents really recognize that you both are people who are can relate to them and are people who live in the same in the same space and area as them. So then the issues that you've seen, that you deem to be important, hopefully are some of the same issues that they that they deem to be important. All right. So as we we'll get into some more kind of toothy questions here. A lot, a lot of what I know you talked about, Shalonda, there at the end about there not being a lot of things to take your kids to in in your district, in your North County area is an issue that people generally kind of talk about. Having having to go outside the area to have a lot of a good time. And and one thing that I know is that some of the more depressed economic economic areas reside in North County and then also additionally in the 4th District specifically. So what should, what should responsible economic growth and development look like in District 4? Now, now that you can, you can start that question as in St. Louis County or North County in general, but I really want us to drill down into District 4 specifically because those are the people who you're going to represent. So we'll start with Shalonda and then we'll go to Mark.
So I am in my life experience as a leader at the Boeing Company. Yes, I'm strategic. I'm detail oriented. I'm results oriented. And I like to think long term. And so what a responsible economic growth and development plan would look like for North County will just look like a successful financial portfolio. It has to be diversified. Yes, there are a lot, a large amount of residential aerial in North County. But we need to leverage out some viable incomes and tax revenues in North County. So we need businesses that can drive some of that home to us. They're not just going to come on their own. We have to incentivize them and come up with a strategic plan to bring that business. If you think about it, Ted and Mark, when you look at North County, go down Limburg, down Hazelwood and Florence. Those those changes in those areas didn't just happen on their own. Their leadership was strategic about putting a plan together. That's what our leadership has not done. When I say diversify the portfolio of businesses in our areas, we've got to have franchise businesses come back to this area. We also got to have support for mom and pop businesses. They sustain America. People invest and sacrifice their life savings to open up mom and pops. And we need to make sure that we have an economic development and growth in our areas so they can be viable. Same for minority, black owned and women owned businesses. Lots of people want to start their businesses, but they need incubation around them. And when I say incubation systems, I'm talking about not just support, you know, through the Chamber of Commerce. We need viable options for grants to have long range business plans for those mom and pops in those minority businesses that will. So as I talked about a responsible economic plan for growth and development in North County, I also want to incentivize businesses to have some stake in the game. So if it doesn't work out, if they have to leave North County, they don't leave North County holding the bag. So there needs to be some clauses in their incentives that if you leave, you are responsible for repurposing your business or you're responsible responsible for tearing down your brick and mortar. But you can't leave North County with all of that luggage. If that makes sense to you all? Any thoughts or feedback?
Mark, what do you, what do you think?
Regarding specific, your last specific statement of tearing a business down?
No, so not so much tearing a business down, but if a business walks away and they built a facility, having that business have some ownership in the future of North County, stating that they have responsibility for repurposing their businesses or like you said, not the business, but the brick and mortar has to be destroyed.
Well, most commercial businesses, everybody takes out a loan. Usually the business plan, typically the business plan is a 10 year plan. So if even snooks the sizes they are, they anytime they build a building, they actually take out a loan. But the the loan cycle is 10 years. A business of any statue that's going to have the resources to build a building is is going to build it, which has equity. It's no different than your home. It's going to have equity. I would not be in favor of if a business closes up. They're closing up for a variety of reasons. One, they're not making money. They haven't made any profit and profit's not a bad word. They have to have a profit. But to if they're closing their business down, bottom line, they haven't done possibly a good job of saving money, escrowing money. Hopefully they've paid their loans and paid their building off. But trying to ask a business to raise the building improvements. And and quite frankly, even though they don't own it, maybe they they own it, but they move out of it. They are still currently responsible under current ordinances in St. Louis County as far as upkeep. They still have to pay taxes. And and a raw piece of ground does not generate the same amount of taxes as the improvement, the building that's on there. Now, the the goal, of course, is to sell the building and they have to insure it. And they have to keep the building up according to the county ordinances. The problem that I see currently with so many dilapidated buildings is that the county doesn't enforce their own ordinance. And that happens not just in St. Louis County, but in the city of Florence as well, as well as in the city of Hazelwood. Enforcing those ordinances make makes things very difficult. Residential property is the same, is the exact same way. Portland Meadows and and Park Oregon Estates are beautiful subdivisions because people keep their properties up. But there are some dilapidated areas, Jamestown Mall being one of them.
So let's let's, we'll talk about Jamestown Mall in a bit. I think I I think I really think I understand your answer to what Shalonda was saying. I really want to get, let's get to your answer to the question about economics in North County. I don't want to lose that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I I believe that in order to have economic growth, you have to have a desire. Shalonda, as you said, you were you were shown a piece of property and that was the place you fell in love with to build your home. So there was a desire. Businesses have to have a desire to come into a community. One of the things North County has had plagued over their head for so many years is a perception. I don't care who you talk to in St. Louis region, which includes Franklin County, St. Charles County. North County has a negative perception. And the and the people that I talk to from Spanish Lake all around, they're concerned about safety, safety and security, crime. And that's, that's a big concern. My goal is from a platform standpoint is to address crime. Back in February, I go to all the North County First Precinct Police Town Hall meetings. The last one was in February. The new captain was introduced, Captain Cunningham. One of his needs, and he made it very clear, he needs 12 new officers to help secure and keep North County safe. He'd like to go with more, but he's starting out with 12. And I fully support that. We need qualified, trained police officers because anytime there's a robbery or a burglary, everybody calls 911 and they have to have a police officer. So when we change that perception, I that's, that's the turning point. We have to work on the perception of North County and and make this place attractive. That's the whole key. Make it attractive. It once was and I can, and I believe it can be again.
So so Mark, it sounds like where you're, just so I can make sure I understand what you're saying. You're saying that the the issue of economic growth and development is a perception issue?
That's correct.
And you and you believe that the way to address that is to affect the the crime system, the the crime, address the crime that's that's happening in North County?
That that is correct. That was, that was one of the downfalls. That was one of the key downfalls of Jamestown Mall. It was a perception that it wasn't safe. And that's, that's what it's all about. It's the perception. I've never had an ounce of problem, you know, living here all my life. I've never, I've never been assaulted. I've never been approached. But I've heard a lot of seniors who have been approached, whether it's panhandlers, somebody looking for a handout, and they're, they're afraid. They're afraid to go out of their homes.
Right. I appreciate that. And thank you too, Shalonda, for for talking about the economic growth. My hope is that we can find a real, a real move forward, a real path forward for economic, for real economic growth and development that helps us not only bring businesses, but also like Mark said, change that perception that's out there about North County and 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 4th District specifically. So as we, as we kind of move forward and talking about 4th District, um, what in your opinion, and Mark kind of started talking about this a bit, what are the three greatest challenges that you see in St. Louis County? And then or District 4? And how should they be addressed? Well, I I think Shalonda asked the last question, so we'll go with Mark.
I I don't know if we can just talk about three, but
Yeah. Hey, believe me, if we wanted to sit down and and come up with a list, it would be many more than three. What I'm, what I'm really looking for is you as a candidate. And as we all know, when you're in a position of of representation and you have a platform and you have, you have priorities. And so I'm really asking about the the issues that you see and those things, issues that you believe are your priority.
Well, it's it's somewhat ties with economic development. First off, St. Louis, one of my three is the embarrassment that the St. Louis County currently fosters in front of the viewing public. It is like a three ring circus. And I know every one of the council members on there. But they're, they're constant arguing and debate publicly. Their their attitudes or their their perceived attitudes towards one another is not at all good. There has to be unity and somebody there has got to be the leader. And, you know, there's, there's four ladies and there's three men. And subsequently, there is a leader that has really got a a new version, a new idea, a younger approach than than most everyone else that's on there. And they're infighting, which is not done in the back room, it's done out in the public. It's just not, it's an embarrassment. And for any kind of economic development to happen in the St. Louis region, not just North County, current businesses, before they expand, they're looking at moving across the river. Because when you look at the council across the river, St. Charles County, while they may argue, they're respectful to one another. They're not in the newspaper. They're not on the front page virtually every day. And so that's the thing at the county council level that really has to, that has to be taken care of. Keeping the economic engine running in St. Louis County as a whole, again, comes and falls back on some of the past experiences, the cronyism, the corruption. Again, all of the negativity that is out there, it gives everybody a bad taste. Why do I live in St. Louis County? You know, it's on the news all the time. It's just negative. It's not positive. And the county council, as well as the county executive, that's, that all relies on their shoulders. The next challenge, the third challenge, I guess, is I I believe we need to rebrand ourselves in St. Louis County. It's done all the time. Businesses, national business, Boeing, they all rebrand themselves when things need to be freshened up. St. Louis County desperately needs a rebranding, marketing strategy. No different than I'm No different than I'm talking about North County needs to get rid of its negative perception. St. Louis County needs to do the exact same thing. Those would be my, those would be my top three items. You know, as far as, you know, as far as St. Louis County as a region.
Shalonda, you want to jump in?
Yes, sir, I would. So that's why I'm running, because I want to be a part of that rebranding and refreshing the council. But I took a different approach with this question. I really wanted to focus and zoom, you know, what the community is telling me when I'm walking through Council Point, that its current state of how it is after flight and flight has happened. I think the top three issues in North County in District Four is these, the following. The inequities that's in our community, whether it be with healthcare, whether it be with jobs. That is a great problem in our area. And we COVID nineteen just ripped the Band-Aid off of it, clear as day. Another issue, as I just mentioned, is jobs, jobs. As I work at one of the larger defense contractors in the world, sitting right here in North County, a pebble stone away. Our community doesn't benefit directly from a lot of those jobs, especially when it comes to some of the more high tech engineering field jobs or some of the more more of the office jobs that I'm referring to. And then also, I think, as Mark may mention, our safety. Our safety is important. And it doesn't matter who you are. You you concerned about your children, you concerned concerned about their education and their safety. And so when I talk about those three issues, that touches every person in North County. And yes, rebranding has to happen. And yes, the council needs to get their act together. But when I look at individuals, when I go and talk to people that's in Council Point now and the lady has a really nice home, that they are part of their project to rebuild the homes, some of the homes out there. She doesn't come out at nighttime. She has a slate on her back door. That's that's dealing with the crime and the policing, right? We talked about being a part of the policing, being a part of the community. I'm all for reforming a police department. But I believe we need one, but they need to be embedded and invested in our communities and resemble the communities that they support and protect. As we say, as he stated, they want 12 new officers. We passed Proposition P. We were supposed to get more support on the street for the police. I don't know where that funding is. Neither does the constituents of this district.
That's correct.
So all of those things are top issues for our community and we need to to hold our leadership accountable. We no, we no longer need to go along and get along. We need to deal with the policing. We need to give them adequate support. They need to be responsible in their community policing and making sure that is reformed. We need sustainable jobs. We don't need two and three jobs to add up for the income for one family. We need good jobs in our community and addressing equality, the inequalities in our community. And that is definitely evident from what we went through with COVID. All of the people that are impacted. In the state of Missouri, we have more cases of COVID than anyone else. More deaths here, but we were last to get tested. It just feels like in North County, everyone go along to get along until a tragedy happens. And then all hands go up in the air. What are we going to do? Let's run and do this. Let's run and do this. No, we need to have a plan in place before. So if we address these top three issues and have a strategic plan for them, North County will start to rebrand itself.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Thank you both for those for those answers. I thought they were great answers that really got into the teeth of some of the issues. So I appreciate that. One of our, one of our commenters asked a question. I wanted to, I know we we kind of start, we talk about a little bit, but I want to ask maybe even though even more specifically, how will you address crime? This was asked by Jan Jacobs. So just real, real specifically and not just talking about Proposition P, but what would you do specifically to address crime? Was one thing. And and Mark, go ahead.
Having more police officers on the street detour crime. Back in the nineties, when MetroLink was going to be expanded, St. Charles County came out very strong. They did not want MetroLink to come across the, come across the bridge. I was quoted in the newspaper a number of times as far as the whole reason they did not want MetroLink going across there because they were fearful of additional crime. The line was drawn in the sand, so to speak. Again, that's that whole perception thing. So more police officers that are trained. And, you know, at in our school district, the SRO officers play a vital role in educating our youth. They're not there as a threat. They are there for protection in the event of. But our SRO officers are not a pipeline to prison. There are some groups out there that feel strongly that they are, but in the case of Hazelwood, they're not. And we deal with St. Louis County, Larson and the city of Hazelwood Police Departments. More police officers, more patrols, more cars. I'd love to have, we'd all love to have a police officer on every street corner, but we know that's just not financially possible. Getting people. Another big, another big thing is the, you know, the community, the community policing watchful eye. Those are vital and those need to be set up. I don't believe there's anybody in St. Louis County pushing for neighborhood watch. Some of the municipalities have different organizations within the police department that really push to have neighborhood watch. Neighborhood watches have to be developed. They have to be cultivated. It takes a police officer to go door to door to subdivisions and trying to get that organized. People have got to start taking and and becoming more invested in their community by helping police their neighbors. Walking in their home, closing the drapes is not always the best thing. Years ago, everybody in South City, South St. Louis, that was a big thing for for folks down there to actually sit on the front porch be on the front porch, watch the kids playing up and down the street, talking with their neighbors. We don't find that kind of unity here in North County anymore. And that's, that's what it's going to take. It's going to take reassurance in the community that there's help there and it's going to be quality help, quality police officers that that have training.
So it sounds, so just to be sure that people understand what you're saying. You're you're talking about more more officers and then more monitoring by neighborhoods.
That's correct. Neighborhood watch is a huge, huge thing.
Shalonda, you care to, you care to jump in with the, with your thought?
Yes, sir. So I do believe that there needs to be community policing. And I've talked with residents and I, as my own self, believe that that community policing needs to start with NPOs. We need to return the neighborhood police officers. So it's a familiar face. So what I'm getting at is there needs to be trust between the community and their police again. So I think that is the first step, right? Because I'm not helping you out if I don't trust you. That's just one person to another. So I didn't, we restoring the trust, restoring the neighborhood police officers. And policing deals with sometimes the symptom of the crime, you know, the results of someone breaking in or someone getting hurt. But we also need to dig deep and see what's the core, the the core reason for that crime. And if we have to deal with job situations, I think that's a part of that core issue with crime. If you have to do with education, I think that's a part of that core issue with crime. And I want to also say accessibility. So being able to access opportunities has to deal with some of that crime. So I believe the policing deals with the symptoms or the results of crime. And one step we should take there is to restore trust with our policing. We also need to put more neighborhood police officers in place. So those are my top three things to address specifically. Rebuilding the trust, putting the neighborhood officers back, and then beyond just dealing with the symptoms that the police have to handle, we also need to look at the core of those issues, which deals with jobs and education and accessibility.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. I appreciate that, Shalonda is. And I understand you to say neighborhood police officers, bring that back.
Yes.
So that we build trust with the police officers and the neighborhoods. But then additionally, find ways to address the root cause of crime in general, which you say is around, is around jobs and and around jobs and the fact that they're not necessarily as available as they should be. Okay. And education, I'm sorry, thank you. So so it seems that policing is really a topic that that our, that our, our guests, our people that are watching are really, is really important to them. So I do have one more question in that same vein. And then we're going to move on to a couple of other, the questions I have and the questions, questions that we have in our, in our chat. And this, and we, and we talk, we talk about community police, we talk about training for police officers. And so the question is, let me see who who's, let me make sure I have the name of the person that's asking. Carolyn Wilson is asking, what does, what should police training look like? What's what's something specific that you think we should make sure is happening in that training? That you could say, chief, this is what you should add.
You still want me to?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So thank you for that question, Ms. Carolyn. I greatly appreciate you attending and being engaged today. One thing that I would say first off is is the person that we hire. So there needs to be investment in the, the people that we recruit and we hire. We need to make sure just how thorough we do backgrounds on those people. In addition to that, the second thing is the training should include bias training. We go through it at work. There are bias and unbiased training that every individual need has. And so we know those things, then we know how to address those things. The second, I'm sorry, the third thing I think they need to go through is sensitivity training and not just throwing the word sensitivity around. When I say that training, I want you first to understand that there are different people, different communities and different backgrounds. And you need to be open to other people's perception when you come into these communities. And so all of those type trainings are intentional and specific. And lastly, I would talk about some of the training that they receive on restricting a person, on de-escalating situations. All of those things need to be forefront of their training. You know, I want police to be able to recognize and identify with their communities. And this type of training that I just shared with you would help a whole lot.
Thank you. Mark, you want to, you want to add?
Sure. Currently, in St. Louis County, they have a recruitment committee. And this, that committee is is a, that total committee is made up of African Americans. And that has been there for some while. And they specifically, no different than the school district, we try to recruit African Americans to participate and take, take on these jobs. Sensitivity right now is at an all time high and it's hard to get anybody to want to be a police officer. St. Louis County, I think last week, just just installed and swore in, I believe, 21 officers. It roughly takes $75,000 to train an officer and it's a roughly a one year process. So they do have extensive training. Can it be more? Absolutely. Social work experience. Officers are are having to need, in my opinion, to also take a part of social work and counseling for 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 a variety, a variety. And that has to be an ongoing, not just a one time, and now you're a police officer. It has to be a continuing education, no different than a real estate agent that has to go through continuing ed once a year or an insurance, a licensed insurance agent here in in Missouri. So continuing ed has to be ongoing. Teachers have to do it. We have set aside professional development days. There's roughly 10 a year for a teacher. And and it's the, it's their, it's, they require it. So the district sets aside money. St. Louis County needs to set money aside in the police budget for continuing education.
So both of those, I appreciate those answers. I hope, I hope Carolyn was able to get a lot from that. From what I understand you guys say is, one, we have to check into who we hire in the first place. And we have to, and and we have to do even a even better job, like you said, Mark, of just recruiting. And and like Shalonda said, of that initial vetting, that that vetting and recruiting in the beginning is key. But then the other key is the, is the county making the money available to do extensive training, not only in the front end, like Shalonda said, but throughout their tenure. Like Mark said. So I think, I I think all of that is is super important because, like you said, like, and Mark, you said it. They require, that's required from so many other professional positions. In-service training, professional development, all of that's required to to keep your license, to keep your certifications, to, so having those kind of trainings as a requirement and not just a a training on if you can still shoot is is suit is really important. So.
Said that Ted, because it's not just getting them training, it's the kind of training that they're receiving. And to put more emphasis on things like de-escalation and understanding biases and perceptions of community. So we both agree that they need more training. I'm totally in agreement with Mark about continuing training because I thought they already had that continual training, just based on a couple of conversations. So. But it's just kind of changing that focus on the type of training they receive.
Shalonda said it very well, too, as far as Prop S. You know, taxpayers said yes to a, 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 a large amount of money that was supposed to go to the police department. I've heard all kinds of stories as far as desks and chairs and paint and wallpaper. You know, there's places that that money went, but it it didn't all go to the police department, you know, for our emergency services like we were sold a bill of goods for.
All right. So I, once again, I appreciate you all for, for staying with us and doing, doing a great job with this, with this conversation. Remember, everyone that's watching, you can always put your comments or your questions in the, in the comment box and we'll make sure that we get them on, get them asked to our candidates here. All right. Now, there's one issue that generally comes up when people talk about District Four. Mark mentioned it early on and I want us to kind of get back to it. And that's Jamestown Mall. It's like a bad word out here. What is your assessment of what's going, what's going on with Jamestown Mall? And how would you address where things currently are and where you think they should go forward as a county council person?
My turn?
Uh, yeah, Mark, Mark, your turn.
Earlier last year, the Port Authority put out a, another RFP. To date, they have received one response. It's a low ball response. I do not know what that number is. That I'm not privy to. But apparently it's so low that the Port Authority has decided to extend the RFP and go back to the market. And those who were talking about it, at least made calls about it. They're reapproaching them. Part of the problem, and recently the mall had a fire. Some people say we should have let it burn down. Well, the problem is, is the fire that was there is actually going to cost whoever decides to buy it more money. What we don't know is, and what I don't know, is the county does have a bid as far as total demolition. I've heard anywhere between five and 10 million dollars. Don't know what one is accurate. But what has to be looked at is you have to have your appraiser look. But what has to be looked at is you have to have your appraiser look at if that was a hundred and ten acres of grass, just an open field that used to be farmed. And what would that value be versus what is the value as it sits? And a, i- it it's a matter of economics. You know, if it's wise to spend county dollars to tear that building down, cover it with dirt. Throw some grass seed out there, I'm all in favor of it, if it is financially feasible. But if it's going to cost taxpayers money to tear it down. Uh and it's going to be worth more to the county leaving the building there, then I am very much in favor of moving forward with whoever put in the proposal for the RFP and let somebody else go with the plan. Now, we don't know what their plan is. Um under the Stanger administration, the plan was a logistics center, big box warehouse. Okay, now, what I would be interested in is what kind of jobs is that going to generate? Um if it's all robotics and it's not gonna create too many jobs, I'm not gonna be too much in favor of of a big blank warehouse. But if it is gonna create jobs, okay, then I might very well be in favor of that. It all depends on what kind of plan is put in front of me to make the best decision on behalf of the residents. Now, this whole project was stalled um when Mr. when Steve Stanger took it away from the council. Um and and given to the Port Authority because there were some, there was council members that were wanting more interest for themselves, self-serving interest. And whole, that's the whole reason it got taken away out of the county councillor's hands and put into the Port Authority. Um that's, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Okay, Shalonda, you have anything you wanna add there?
Yes, so um I, a lot of things that Mark share shared was very informative to, I'm assuming a lot of the participants on the call today, on in the um meeting today. One thing that we should have done and we need to be more vocal about is the communication of the plans, whatever the plans may be. Lots and lots of residents are not even aware that the county council doesn't have authority over Jamestown Mall anymore. Some of them just paying attention to it now because the fire happened a couple of weeks ago. So when we step into these roles and we we came and asked for these responsibilities to be leaders in our communities. It's on us to communicate to our community thoroughly and consistently on what is going on. Not just a slide in the newspaper to say that you did, you did what you were supposed to do, but make sure that they are where engaged. So I'm, whatever the plan that comes before, if I have this opportunity to serve our community in this capacity. I definitely wanna make sure it is communicated thoroughly and well. I am in favor of demolishing first step, the current brick and mortar of Jamestown Mall. And I know that may be costly, but I bet we have enough residents in the area that's probably willing to vote on, okay, you need me to pay a little more taxes to tear down? Tear down, cuz it's been sitting here for over ten years. I recall the first plan that came together with underneath uh former executive do uh executive uh Dooley. When he brought us all, we went to, it was under the Urban Land Institute study. And we went to uh Flow Valley for like six weeks, coming together every week. And I was one of those people sitting at the table bothering my neighbors, y'all come on, we always want them to take care of our community. They gotta see that we wanna be engaged. And I galvanized our community and we went there for six weeks to come up with a plan and nothing materialized. Not from him, recently after, nor the next administration or the current administration. And so what I think we have to do first is to get the community to trust us again, to do what we say we're gonna do. Same situation, we need to have trust. So after we demolish it. And if it's more profitable, profitable as Mark mentioned, for it to just be some dirt with some grass going on, that may be fine. If there are other requests or proposals that come out and say, hey, um we have a plan that's gonna benefit the community. I'm also not for bringing something that would not benefit this community. We talk about development and economic growth. Why would we put a business here that will not circulate the dollars in this community? That will not bring forth more uh financial uh businesses in this community. And and making sure that our dollars circulate in our communities more instead of going to other communities. So uh logistics center, I'm not for, I'm not for. Uh we talked about what we like to do in North County. I don't wanna look at a logistics center. I would like for our community and our youth and I and our elders to have something more vibrant in their community. So that's what I think about North County. Uh and I'm very calm right now, Ted, cuz I can get real animated about Jamestown Mall.
Don't upset her.
Well, I I think I think there's a lot of, a lot of members of the community as a whole. From from District Four to why St. Louis County to St. Louis proper, every everyone in St. Louis Metro. Um cuz everyone went to Jamestown at some point. And that that was definitely a place where we would go. So so seeing where it is today is is upsetting for anyone, really. Um and 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 so what I'm, what I like that I heard is uh both of you kinda said, look, if it's if it's better as 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 some dirt and and grass, it's better be torn down, let's tear it down. And this builds up and up, it's gonna really be work, it's really gonna work for the people of District Four. And not only that, don't just give me some, something that's gonna, is gonna have four or five people working in it. Um give me something that's gonna really impact the community in a real way. Because that can be a better, another economic driver for the entire district and county as a whole. So I I get that and I and I appreciate you both kinda having that thought. Um I I do also agree that it's it's important for those for those steps to be um communicated well to the constituents of the area. Because I don't, it is not fair, in my opinion, for uh for for constituents to find out about what's happening with Ja- with a place like Jamestown Mall or anything else in the district. Find out from sources, it's not the person that they rep- that they elect to represent them. So we have to do, so we have to do a greater job just in general in being um being transparent about what's happening and why it's happening. So I appreciate you both uh for for thinking along along those lines. There was a question that was asked earlier and I I I I don't want to uh to lose that question. From a uh from Mr. Douglas Marks. It kinda goes back a little bit, so um so just stay with me, y'all. Uh he asked about the ordinances now. Um Mark, you earlier has talked about how we need to enforce the ordinances. Um and so he's talking about, so Douglas is asking about uh panhandlers on two seventy and West Florissant. Seventy Hall's Ferry, um abandoned buildings. And he's wondering, not, he's he's asking, why do we not enforce ordinances? I think my question to you, to you both then, and and succinctly, is how can we make sure we're enforcing the ordinances that are on the books? From your position, how can you, from your position, make sure ordinances are enforced?
Shalonda, I think it's your turn first.
Sure, so uh again, every community, North County's diversity in this community is vast. And so you have some areas where they they hold and adhere and enforce those ordinance a thousand percent. Not a hundred percent, a thousand percent. And then you have other communities where they can't even get a phone call returned to them when they're trying to restore their communities. Um so one thing I have to say is beyond the subdivisions. And some subdivisions have had been engagement and informed leaders in their subdivision that helps them get things done. But we have to think about those communities that do not have that level of of knowledge and that level of of network to get things done. And then that's just in at the feet of the commu- the county council person that represents them. They need to make sure that they enforce, inform the community about whether this is a a problem solving committee issue or if it's a police issue. Then we go to this accountability. There needs to be accountability at every level, from the residents to the homeowners, when I'm talking about dilapidated in vacant homes or houses. There needs to be responsibility for the the residents there, the home own, the homeowners who's taking flight, but still making a profit off of those areas, and the St. Louis County Council. So when we talk about what's the first steps, the first step should be your county council person. If you have a great subdivision association, phenomenal. But that shouldn't leave you in the dark when you do not, because that's what the county council is supposed to be there for. They have public works, they have that authority to to make sure that those ordinances are enforced. From panhandling, from uh vacant homes, and even the vacant bu- big buildings that are left behind. That is for your council to do. They are supposed to make sure that we follow through and that people are adhering to those ordinance. So I believe it starts with the county council.
Mark, you wanna add?
Yes, I uh, you know, recently I uh I did a uh an interview with the Realtors Association. And uh and of course, as as any kind of a special interest group, they uh they have certain issues that they wanna fight St. Louis County on. Uh and they don't like restrictions and they don't like regulations. And they really don't like the fact that Florissant uh has an occupancy permit. Florissant has uh uh background checks that uh the landlords have to do. Um you know, on on those who are occupying. And if somebody has done something negative uh in the eyes of the law, they're not allowed to get an occupancy permit to move into the home. Um North County used to have one and sometimes two um policing officers, neighborhood policing officers. Um but they were, they were covering all of North County. Uh all of the first precinct district. Um and then they dropped their uh their NPO. Uh and recently, recently uh have got back an NPO. Oh, had to do with a staffing issue, had to do with budget issue. I heard all kinds of excuses. Um but we need, and and I've gone on ride-alongs. I've looked at property from Delwood to Bell Fountain to Spanish Lake, Black Jack. Um and there there's some, there's some terrible living conditions out there uh that have to be addressed. The courts are backed up and of course, a lot of this has to do with the courts and and the willingness for for a prosecutor to go forward a- and do that. A municipality, uh of course, typically has their own judge and their own set of courts that handle that type of thing. Uh that's why so many people in the county wanna go with annexation. Uh I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of annexation. Um it has its good sides and it has its bad sides. Why don't they enforce the laws that they have? It's kinda like asking, why do they not enforce uh expired license plates, expired temp tags? It's it, it's breaking the law, it's a, it's it's a very small misdemeanor. Um there are people who financially can't afford it. So just to say, go out there and enforce the law is is not just the answer. We also have to have a means of of a way for people to take care of their property. Whether it's forgivable grants, there's all types of programs that we have to give. An eighty-five-year-old single lady, widowed lady, um you know she's not out there cutting her own grass. You know she can't clean her gutters, she can't fix her screens, she can't fix her windows, she needs help. And so there are programs currently that could help her. But more importantly, committees and groups can be set up in the community, whether it's Boy Scouts, whether it's church groups. Uh Florissant, uh a year ago, had a group from Kentucky on a missionary that came up here to help people in Florissant. And I thought to myself, why are you coming from Kentucky? Why can't we get people here to form that group to do do those kind of services? Florissant Courts, and I've talked with the judge a number of times, why can't we take people who have offenses that they can't pay? That they're that are struggling. Why can't we get them to do sweat equity? Why can't we get a program put together to where they could come out to work off a, I don't know, a fifty-dollar, hundred-dollar fine? You know, to work off on a on a six-hour Saturday. Yes, it's gonna take supervision, yes, there's gonna have to be some expense, but we're smart enough people to work that out.
So it so it sounds, it sounds like, Shalonda, you're saying that as far as ordinances go. We we should have, we, there's a person in place to to take care of those things. And to to lead in making those, in making those, those ordinances actually be enforced. And Mark, it sounds like you're talking, you're saying, you're giving ideas of what that person who's to be, to be in that lead could be doing. Yeah, so, okay, so I get, I get both of it. Thank you so much for those. Um we are, we we are actually, it's funny, we're moving pretty quickly here and uh and we're we're getting closer to the time than I thought we would. So I, so I have, I have two more questions I wanna ask. And uh I'm gonna check, we're gonna check our um our chat to see if there's any other question we wanna make sure we ask before we go. Um so I I was, I was gonna ask around about um COVID nineteen and county response. But I I think, I think we'll, that has already kinda been talked about enough, so we're not gonna go into that. But I do wanna ask a question about uh about the differences of investment. So if you're looking at Florissant and you're looking at uh Riverview in North County. Um there's a definite difference in investment in those areas. Some would, some would say that those spaces are um inequitable. What specific steps would you take to make those more equitable?
I I I think I'm, I'm think I'm up first. Um North County uh in general was designed to be a bedroom community.
Say that one more time, of of what community?
A bedroom.
Okay, bedroom, okay, thank you.
Um it it is uh, it is not an industrial town. But it was all put together and designed uh for a bedroom community. North County came to be, and Julius Hunter uh wrote a wonderful book about St. Louis and how it, how St. Louis revolved and was developed. Why North County uh was the working blue collar folks? Why West County was the white color, a white collar uh higher caliber, price-wise income, how West County came to be, as well as how South County came to be. It's a, it's a great book. So North County, North County was a, was a boom af- you know, after the war in the fifties. And it was prime ground, it was all farm ground, it was all built with good quality housing. Um so i- i- if there's a fault on North County, it's that the houses built in the fifties were top-notch quality. Um so the housing stock is substantial. Why Riverview is different than Hazelwood? And 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 I'm talking about school districts. I know the superintendent at at Riverview, uh Scott Spurgens. He's a great guy, loving, caring guy. Uh and he's done great things with the school district. But but what has happened in the Riverview School District um is that they got hit with a social economic problem of poor people. Hazelwood is experiencing the same, school district is experiencing the same thing. Our poverty level are going up. You can that identify that through looking up DUCI, Department of Elementary and Secondary on the free and reduced lunch program. You can see year after year how those numbers have gone up as far as free and reduced lunch. That is the telltale sign that poverty is taking over our area. Um the problems of of our community Are, are based on, and it's not, it really is not a black and white issue. Today it is a poverty issue. There are, there are people of color who are in poverty, there are Caucasians that are in poverty. Poverty does not discriminate. And so people have to gravitate to areas that are. That meets their capabilities. Riverview is an older area. And subsequently an attractive area for housing stock. But their, but their population of, in a poverty level is much greater. Than in the Hazelwood School District, although the Hazelwood School District is also, numbers are growing in that area as well.
So Mark, uh, so Mark, thinking about that and I'm, I'm pushing you just a little bit because of our timeframe we have left. So what's something from your position as county council person that you can do specifically to address? That inequity that you just eloquently laid out?
I don't know if it was eloquently, but um. Jobs. You know, people have got to have a job. People have to be. Influenced. There has to be a reason for someone to get a job, people have to be reassured. That. What they're doing is, is going to better themselves. They may need additional education, they may need transportation and we haven't even touched on transportation. But people have got to feel good about themselves, they need self-pride. And the only way to do that is by getting jobs. Before the pandemic, uh, before all of the current crisis, you know, the job market. You could go up and down Lindbergh and there was jobs available. Now, they could, they were at fast foods and liquor stores or handyman hardware. But they're, but they're entry-level jobs. We have to get these, we have to get folks back-trained and educated. We need to help lift people up. We need to really focus and the community college has got to figure. They need to partner, whether it's with the YMCA and the community leaders. Whether there, it's the county council person or whether it's a church or multiple churches. You know, we have got to get our, our residents. Additionally educated and on the right track, whatever that track would look like. To get a job and to prove to those, to these good-hearted people. That going to work and working hard. Is, is a, is a valuable lesson and it's definitely needed.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Shalonda, you want to jump on that question, please?
Go real quickly because I know we're short on time, so the first thing I want to say is that Riverview versus Hazelwood are floors in two different tax brackets. Plain and simple, tax brackets are different in that dear area than it is in Florence. When we talk about the different tagback brackets, that impact on what the community can provide for itself. So we need to look at debt inequity first. After we look at the tax bracket, we also, as Mark brought out, talk about the jobs, yes, jobs are important and we need them. It's the kind of jobs that we need. He was speaking my language and I was trying to hold my smile back because I am a true advocate. As a, as a leader at Boeing in, in, in charge, we're trying to hire four hundred engineers by the end of the year, last year, not this year, it passed already. What we need to do, we have to create and be more innovative about our jobs for our future, for our youth. And start them early, we need a new pipeline from the classroom to the office. We need to be able to entice, not entice, I think the word is, we need to broaden the horizon of our youth and explore and explain. Excuse me, and expose them to different type of opportunities. I was thinking about my challenge in my job right now of finding all of that talent, looking all over the United States, trying to find that viable. Candidate that has the skillset. I would have loved to look in my backyard at Hazelwood Central, McClure North, Riverview. To say, hey, these students have what it takes to get the job done and offer them those seventy-five thousand, eighty-five thousand dollar jobs a year. But in order to do that, we have to be more innovative on how we get them there. Everybody's not going to a four-year college. I got three young sons, they all on different paths. We need to be able to create an environment where our youth, starting in grade school can be explo- be exposed to engineering and different type of high-tech jobs. Then in grade, in middle school, they don't wait till they're in college, but middle school and high school start having apprenticeships. So they can start seeing the incentive of having. A good. Solid income in their family. And then when they graduate from high school, if they don't decide to go to col- college, they've already been through an apprenticeship program. So they're qualified to at least come in as a associate engineer or junior engineer. All of this leads back to one statement that Mark said, we have to bring all the like-minded people together to be innovative and come up with new ideas. Would happen respectfully and glad that there is tradition, but what happened fifty, sixty, seventy years ago is not going to prepare us. For North County's future fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years forward. So working with our community, the business leaders, the educators and your county council, I want to be their champion and say, hey. It's time out for the same old, same old, we need to get our act together and look for the future and do something better. So I look at that as being a way to explain, explain the disparity in those communities, but also what we have to do to change those disparities in those communities.
Thank you. So into my, into our last question, what I want to kind of do, and we're going to roll together. Two questions and your final thoughts. Okay, so the question Carmen Baker Mays asked a question says, if you are elected. What would you do specifically to try to work on issues that are important to you? What, like what are your first steps? To that, I add my question. If you're not elected. What are you going to do to work on the issues that are important to you? And then if you like, go ahead and take, take the rest of that time, take, take about another minute. To uh kind of give your final thoughts and how people can support your campaign.
I lost track, I think it's Shalonda.
I think it's on me, so thank you, Ms. Mays for uh answering this question, asking this question and again, being engaged with our community. The first thing I can do on day one. Is to communicate. Have transparency. And work with integrity. I can do that on day one regardless of how long it takes to fix Jameson Mall, that I can do on day one, that's something Shalonda can control. To help benefit our community. I want to remove the silents. That's between the people of North County. And the leader that has the voice on North County's, I'm sorry, St. Louis County Council. The people need to be engaged and have a voice that will fight for them, that will advocate for them and that will be held accountable. One thing that I also want to do is to make sure that I am accessible. It broke my heart when I walked through again, Council Point and the lady talked about, I've called up to my county council multiple times. And I'm not getting any response. And then to know in another area, I've called to get some help. I just got a call back two weeks ago, but I've been calling for years. All of that needs to change. The rebranding starts with myself. To make North County better. Regardless if I'm elected or not, I'm gonna still be Shalonda and I'm gonna still do what Shalonda does. That's be engaged in my community, whether it's mentor St. Louis, junior achievement at Hazelwood Central, each one teach one. Volunteering at the um veterans home on three sixty-seven, that's who Shalonda's always been. Bothering my neighbors to say, we have to be engaged, okay. Be the same person that hosts the neighborhood cookout. All of those things I will continue to do, I've always been a worker bee. I always tell people. That, and my grandmother taught me this. People may have more money than you. People may be more well-connected to you, but what they won't do, they won't outwork me. And that's what I want to do for the people of North County, I want to work smart and hard for the people of North County because they deserve it, they sacrifice. To maintain their homes, they pay their taxes. They, they're putting their school, their kids through school the best way that they can and we need to. Be able to be respectful to them and give them the representation that they deserve. So I'm Shalonda Webb, I'm running for county council, I hope that you've gotten to know me better, this. I'll win thirty minutes that we spend together and that if you need more information that you will go out to shalondaweb.com or visit me at Facebook, Shalonda Webb for North County. Mark, I respect your service that you've given to North County and the leadership that you've given throughout the years. And I appreciate you being respectfully joining me today on this platform and sharing the concerns of our community. And Ted, I am so grateful for you putting this together and giving us this opportunity to communicate with our. Our neighbors basically. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mark.
You know, Shalonda, you said, you, you really do say things very eloquent and I uh, it's, it's tough. It, it, this is a tough decision for, for folks because uh. There are two good candidates, good people right here. I, 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 I don't know why the other candidate couldn't make it. Uh, their county council meeting was at one o'clock today, wasn't tonight. So I don't know why, but. First thing, first thing that I would do. Is I, I'm not a man of words, I'm a man of action. It's a matter of follow or get out of my way. Because we're going to hit the floor running. I want to hear from the community, I'm out in the community, talking to individual groups. Trying to keep the, the, the whole six-foot distance and all that kind of good stuff. But listening to the constituents, listen to the people of Spanish Lake Blackjack, six-three-oh-three-four zip code. They all have concerns and are all very, very similar. Uh, a public meeting, there has been one. Posted, announced, noticed. Meeting that was a public meeting by the current representative, uh roughly four hundred people in the church. Uh, and it was, it was a mess. People were upset because everybody came because they wanted to hear about the first tag, the first leading. Notification was Jameson Mall and the mall was not the discussion point, it was the zoo, I welcomed the zoo. But when you get people there on false pretense and they get mad as, as all get out. And you stand outside. Because you're mad and you talk to people as they're walking out the door. Uh, you get a, you get a real strong feeling of what they think of with their representative. So one of the first things I would want to do is have a community meeting, I plan on. And I would like for, probably would wind up starting out with three. Public meetings. That would be. At Hazelwood East and then Hazelwood Central. People could come to either one. But have them in different locations, so it would be convenient for people to come and I want to listen. I want to hear everybody's complaints, I want to see it and do it face-to-face. Calls. I do return calls, I do return emails, it does take me a day or two, I don't live on a computer. I, and, and, and I'm not an IT person, Shalonda. I uh, I, I wish I had, I wish I had some of your skills. But I'm a hunt and pecker. But I do return calls, being in business, that is a requirement to run a successful business, is to communicate. And talk with people, second, third thing, I want to support the police and I want to make it known right out of the gate, I am pro-police. I am pro su- uh, support for North County and bringing in safety and security. The next item is I want to start building a relationship, I want to earn a relationship uh with the current county council, they know me. Uh, some more than others. But I want to have a strong, working, honorable, respectful relationship. Uh, with those county council members, I want to start building that bridge. And, and getting them to understand. I'll help you, I'll help you in West County, I'll help you in South County. But you're going to give me more than fair share for the folks that really need it in North County. And, and by doing that, by, by reaching across the aisle, if you want to say it. That's what's needed. I, I don't need fun and games, I don't need baseball tickets and hockey tickets and all that other kind of nonsense, I don't need it. I just want to make sure whatever I'm doing, I'm doing it for the best interests of North County, I'm not going anywhere. If I don't win, I'm going to be right here, I'm still going to be on the school board, I'm still going to be involved in all of the organizations I am supporting North County. If I don't win and Shalonda does, I want to, I want to be her and Steve's next best friend. Because I want to help support her, okay, in the efforts.
You just have to be my friend, Mark, don't worry.
Okay. I'll be your friend, right, and I think we kind of are already.
So Mark, so Mark, how, how can people uh contact you or, or support your campaign?
Uh, I do have a, a website, uh, it is markbellmantwentytwenty.com, all, all one word. Uh, pretty simple, uh, I live on Lindsay Lane. And I'm the only person that has had their own food pantry stocked in front, in their front yard. Since March, since the whole pandemic thing started, I have my own personal food pantry. Uh, I'm not in competition with team who I also represent. I uh, I get donations and I buy my own food and keep it well-stocked. So I'm the only one that's got a food pantry in my front yard, so. I'm, I'm that guy, so.
Awesome, well, I want to thank both of you for being part of this, uh, this open mic debate series. Want to also thank all of our watchers, all, all the listeners, everyone that's been participating. For participating because that's how we really get things moving is by all of us participating and being a part. And recognizing that, that uh, it's important for our, our representatives. To know that they will be held accountable. For the things that they say they're going to do, it's important for our representatives to take opportunities to tell us what they're going to do. And then show us. So I thank you both, Mark, Shalonda for participating, for everyone watching, this will be available. On uh, Life on Wax with Ted Junior Page, it'll also be available on YouTube, uh, probably tomorrow. Part of, part of I get it going today, it'll be available on YouTube tomorrow and that link will be available. Uh, everywhere and I'll give that link to both candidates so they can share it with, share it far and wide as they like. I remember election, the election is August fourth. And also uh, make sure that you re- that you get registered by July eighth. Because that's the last day to be registered, um, you can all, you can register online, check your registration online, do all of that. As soon as possible because you don't want to be the one that, that uh, that got left out of this table one. So if, if that's everything, want to let everybody know, thank you one more time and everybody let's meet at uh, at Mark's food pantry. Thank you so much, have a good one.
Thank you all, thank you, Mark, thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Shalonda, thank you, Ted, have a great evening.